Okay, it's 6:00 PM, Tuesday, September 12th. We'll call to order the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission. Mr. Nutt's gonna do the invocation and Ms. Graham will do the pledge if we'll all stand.
I gotta thank you this beautiful day that you provided to us and your Lord, the many blessings you provide to us from time to time. And Lord, this week as we ever reflect back on the history and the attacks of 9/11, dear Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over those many families that were affected and the lives lost in that day and for many years thereafter. And dear Lord, we, we ask that you continue to watch over our men and women in uniform and the first responders as they so thank for many sacrifices that they provide to us in keeping us safe. And we ask that you just continue to keep them out of harm's way. And God, as we, we ask that you watch over since we take up this agenda tonight and continue to watch over the leadership of the city and push us forward in the right direction. Forgive us where we fall short. Christ name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the prior minutes, which would actually been our July 11th meeting since we did not have a meeting in August?
Make a motion we approve the prior meeting minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, preliminary plat approval. Now we'll turn it over to Director Brooks.
Preliminary plat request for 2.21 acres identified on tax map 133 parcel 9406 and located at Sugar Creek Lane for the construction of 16 townhomes. The property is owned by a high density residential, R3. The owner of the property is Mr. Alan Blevins and Mr. Blevins is in the audience with Gerald Vick who is representing Mr. Blevins.
How would you like to start? Would you like to start with staff comments or would you like them to speak on it?
Listen to speak on it. They can address the comments.
I'm assuming this is why you signed the sheet.
Pardon?
You assume this is why you signed the sheet even though you're the representative of Mr. Blevins?
Gerald Vick, the WS Engineers and Surveyors, we're here to represent the project. I believe we understand the comments and have worked back and forth with the, with the staff to make sure that what we're showing addresses their comments. We have submitted in, submitted the flat plan today, so we'll look for additional comments on that going forward for next month, before next month's meeting.
Can you speak up a little bit if you can?
Okay. As y'all know, the, the project is on Sugar Creek and we're right behind where the funeral home is there. Right now, we've modified the plan based on staff review to 16 townhome units. And we believe we've got everything addressed the way, the way that they requested it. We did have one request of an exception based on the, the orientation of the property that there is an item in your ordinance that says that the property is supposed to be accessed driveways to the rear with the orientation and the diameter of the property. We requested that it be allowed to access from the front because if you access it from the rear, it's going to be a bigger impact to the residential properties behind it. And we've got our landscape buffer behind the property and, and kind of creating more of a, a buffer between us and the property.
So the townhomes are gonna face the funeral home?
Yes.
Okay. Face the private drive. So it'll be the rear of the homes and the buffer on Sugar Creek.
So can you show me where the parking, where they're gonna park?
There'll be driveway.
I'll make sure I know.
Driveways in front of the units.
Okay.
So there'll be driveways.
So that's what that, okay.
There'll be driveways.
That's driveways right here. Okay. Okay. Cool. Yeah.
And then there'll be a landscape buffer in the back to buffer the residence. Basically, you'll, you'll face the street, the main road, Main Street there.
Do y'all have any questions for Gerald?
The question I have is, is I've seen some of the comments from the others, but was there any comment, Chris, you may have answered, was there any comments about the drainage? Just I drive by there every day looking at what's on, what's on the preliminary plat. I don't see how that's gonna work, but has there been anybody to review the drainage for that property or what they've got laid out here with the detention plot?
I will say that, that what's shown there preliminarily, it will meet the, the requirements and the detention requirements and the water will effectively go toward Main Street. Pretty much all the water falls that direction off of the property anyway. We do show on our construction plans improving the ditch toward Main Street to make sure that the water will flow that direction the way, the way it needs to be.
You wanna take a ditch all the way to Main Street?
Yes, we gotta put a water line down through there anyway. So yeah, we'll make sure the ditch is, is, is formed correctly. The ditch is already there. It just needs to be re- regraded to make sure that it, it's formed, that it doesn't have any rises where over time.
Just looking at the elevation plans, we've put in an 18 inch, you know, pipe. If it's 12 inches below, it's 30 inches and for about 100 foot, all you guys is two foot. So I don't, 6 inch of it's gonna suck full of water if that's the case.
Well, it should, we, we have it. We're, we're grading it up to, to catch that so they won't set full of water.
Has anybody looked at that? Have we had anybody look at the drainage?
We just turned in today.
Okay.
Yeah, construction plans have been submitted, so that will be part of the review.
Well, that'll be addressed on the construction plans.
Correct.
Because this is just a preliminary plat. Anybody else have any questions for me?
So how does that work that means that we make a motion, they're asking for something different? Tell me how that works.
Please be a waiver for the rear alley parking for the planning commission to waive that.
And then you're asking specifically about the construction drawing being different than addressing that water runoff, right?
No, no, I just didn't know how we, okay, I was making sure I understood what the parking, you know.
Okay. Two different things.
Things, yeah. That's for later.
Yeah, the construction plan shouldn't be different from what we have here. It's just that they've gone into more detail.
Thank you, Gerald.
Is that correct, Will, when they did some waiver?
Yeah. Sum that up. They requested you consider a waiver for location of the parking to be on the front of the units instead of what the code requires. That's fine. It's a design review matter that y'all have jurisdiction over. And then to address the issue about drainage, they'll be able to be looked at closer with the construction drawings that are an improvement on the preliminary.
No, I think it's better that it's coming off a private road. I would have had some concerns if they were backing on to Brookside there.
Yeah, you know, some things to consider are the depth of the property here. That alley, if it was located to the rear, would be closer to those established residences. So that might be something to consider. The advantage that an alley gives you, it's just a cleaner streetscape for these new units that look really good, more consistent sidewalks and things like that. But that's completely in your review to grant a waiver for. The other items listed in the stack before, you may want to just consider those. You can approve it as is. You can approve with conditions or not, but everything appears to be in order. And then if you're in agreement with the waiver, just you may want to make that either a condition of approval or a separate. You don't get to, y'all haven't had those waiver requests a lot, so it's.
The neighbors would prefer and have a landscape. The neighbors prefer a landscape instead of a road. You know, I talked to a couple of them back there and I think it'd look better too. Parking wise, we still have adequate parking and we, we didn't meet codes with 20, but we knacked it down to 16. So we kind of redesigned it and made it look more aesthetic for hopefully everybody involved. So it takes care of all the needs and the drainage will be addressed in the construction.
As well as like the location of the water meters.
Right. Power supply. That, they've already addressed that. There'd be, there'd be no parking on the private drive. That's in the notes.
Just one additional comment I have. I had a citizen come in. When they build these townhomes, we'll need to make sure the photometrics does not in the rear, does not bleed off across the property line. So we may have to look at the eve lights and, and tone them down or potentially eliminate them. We'll just have to have photometrics planned for that.
We have photometrics planned, but if it encroaches on them, we'll adjust. I know that we have.
Well, that's, that was just, that was a very, good comment. Good comment.
We, we had several people sign up tonight. Is anybody here that wants to speak on this specific project? You do, and your name is Mary Ellen Wilson? Okay. Uh, need to come to the podium, state your name.
Address.
Address.
I'm Mary Ellen Wilson and I'm one of the neighbors. My husband and I own the house at 316 Brookside and I do appreciate the changes that have been made to accommodate some of our concerns. I would like to know though, if you can tell us what the price point is intended to be for these homes because this, this is my biggest concern, of course, is, is our property value because these townhomes are not, this is not like, doesn't have like a clubhouse and lots of amenities.
Which is not a section eight, put it that way. It's gonna be a high price point and it, and it's already 1,900 and something square feet. And I don't know because I haven't got the exact number of them up yet.
That's, that's my biggest concern, how that affects our property.
It will be.
They're all two-story, correct? Right? So I mean, it's a lot of square footage.
You know, I can't give you a specific number, but it will be way above 300. I can't give you specific numbers, but it's gonna be as high as we can tolerate.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anybody else want to speak on the specific project before we entertain motions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we waive our requirement to have the parking in the rear and let them locate it in the front. Let's take a bet.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, preliminary plat approval. And number seven, construction plan approval. It's my understanding that the requestor has asked to have both of those deferred.
Was that request only for the waiver or was that for the preliminary plat approval?
That's the plat approval, with the, with the waiver.
With the waiver.
With the waiver.
We'll add that to the motion.
Right. So we need a motion on these deferrals for six and seven?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion for the preliminary plat approval for cottages of Bearwood?
I'll make a motion to defer those.
For a second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, they also had construction plans that they wanted to defer.
Make a motion we defer that? Let's take a bet.
Also, those were requested by the applicant.
They are, were the request by the applicant.
Yeah.
Deferring it until?
Next month. Is what they had asked specifically. So we got a motion in the second, all in favor? Motion carries. Number eight, final plat request. Turn it back over to you, Director.
Final plat request for Landmark Ceramics identified on tax map 1.6 parcel 003.04 and located at 1427 North Main Street. To abandon 1,206 feet of sewer line in easement and reestablish 1,206 feet of sewer line in easement. The property is owned light industrial. The property owner is UST Incorporated. And to kind of give just a brief summary, I came in after this kind of had been pulled together, but the city had put in 1,206 linear feet of sewer line. And when they came, when Landmark Ceramic came in with an addition to their building, it was going to cross that line. So in turn, they installed 1,206 linear feet of sewer line to replace what the city had put in and paid for. We are, one of the comments was to extend the easement, sewer easement, well, actually utility easement, to the northern part of the property. That way, if there's anything that in the future that may need to cross the front of that property, there will be an easement already established. And we have a representative for Landmark Ceramics. If you would like to hear from them.
Sure, absolutely, if they'd like to. And who do we have?
My name's Chris Getz. I'm with Gresham Smith. We did the design work and I have a survey record on the plat that's in front of you, 222 Second Avenue South, Nashville. As you so eloquently said, you know, we're just basically trying to abandon a portion of a sewer line and create another as previously agreed on. Happy to try and answer any questions you have beyond that.
I just need to know if the city's happy, I guess.
So basically, the, the original sewer line was directly into the plant. Now it's coming out closer towards Main Street and that's where we're gonna have an easement in case there's growth going north. And yeah, this is all agreed upon.
And it's all checked out and everything's good with it? I mean, as far, there's no staff concerns or?
Not at this point, no.
How did it go from 30 foot wide to 20 foot wide? Because if the sewer line's 15, 12 foot deep, 20 foot easement, you can't dig it.
I can't answer a whole lot of questions about the engineering side of it.
But the original easement was 30 foot. It's just 20. And then also, is the, is the easement prescriptive in meaning that it's got boundaries or does it follow the line? Because it says appear that it don't guarantee that the line's within it.
So it, the, the new easement would have boundaries. You know, like it's a, it's a described.
So is anybody shot to make sure that, just because I've had this experience, anybody shot the manhole to make sure that that is truly setting in the center of that easement?
I believe we've got sewer has been done.
Yes, as up here it says, but.
And that's, that is just a standard utility disclaimer, but.
We deal with him, but I know that that's not the right location. When you go out to dig in 15 years and it's not there, then you got a problem.
One of the requests that we have also is an actual legal description of the whole thing, like the whole easement from, like right now, we have, we have a written legal description for the new part, but if it extends all the way to the edge of the property, we'd want it described like from start to finish off the mound.
We just want to know that that line is truly.
Yeah.
The word that would say.
And you would see that if, if that is staff's wishes to have that extend all the way across the frontage, it would appear on the plat, you know, with dimensions.
But I know if it changes from 30 to 20, the sewer, it does you no good if it's that, if it's that deep. I mean, I think somewhere it's 15 to 20 foot deep. You need a 30 or 40 foot easement if you're gonna redig it. You can't access, it's too, too steep of a slope. So and then they, if you don't have an easement, they have a right to build up to it. So then you can't access the lines into technology or typical construction practices.
And again, I'm not crossing over in, in the engineering, but maybe there's a temporary construction easement consideration?
And you, the city, I mean, it's a city question, but I, I mean, I just, the original was 30 foot. I just don't know why, why we would take less than the easement.
It goes from 30 to 20. It's 30 right here. 30 all the way.
Oh, why, why would we take, why would we do that?
That's the first I've heard of that. You know, do we make that a condition?
And that may be.
I mean, this shows plain here.
Yeah, it's 30, then it goes down to 20.
Changes. That's maybe because of the driveway is so close.
And the line needs to be in center of that 30. It does you no good if the line, as far as I'm saying, if the line's on the edge.
Yeah.
You may have 30 foot wide easement on the edge, it does you no good.
I don't think they could go 30 feet.
Some of them written as be 15 feet on each side of the line, which is easy. They'll do it descriptive.
I think when you say.
But that's the line. See, if that's the line there, it's not nowhere near the center.
So you don't have, makes it hard to get access.
What are your thoughts, Cory?
I don't have thoughts on whether or not that, right. I mean, that's, I guess, up to y'all. We are approving or considering a final plat, like you said, abandoning the old and proving the new one. So that's a condition. We've already asking for a condition that the easement extend all the way across that property. And Chris can probably explain how we feel like we have the authority to make that request. But I think also if you build 30 feet, if appropriate, you can ask for that condition as well.
The easement, we don't even have the legal description together to, that's all coming later.
We have the one, but it would already need to be modified.
Yes.
Our condition that it extend across.
Can we approve this with two conditions or do we need to push it off?
There's another condition off that.
Sounds like maybe they need to come back.
Well, the representatives are gonna make a phone call because they would not be able to approve the 30 foot easement. But if the commission's inclined to put that as a condition, deferral was mentioned when I had the conversation with the applicants.
We, we don't have any of our public works people there either. They always tell.
We'd need our engineers.
Engineers.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm Emily Wayne. I'm, I'm on that sheet. I'm the legal representative.
All right.
And this was, it's a little bit of a cluster because this was all agreed to before any of our involvement and now there are all new parties here. So we've got somebody who has stepped out to make a call to someone who has the authority to say if that's something that we can agree to in terms of the 30 feet versus 20 feet. We would prefer not to defer it, but so if y'all can just give us a few minutes to see if there's an agreement we can work out, then we'll certainly, and if we have to defer it, it's, it won't be the first time, it won't be the last time. So we would prefer not to if we can avoid that.
That's true.
There were three things. The extension of, the extension of the right away, lining the right away. What am I missing? There's, they said there was three things.
T deck approval.
T deck, t deck, okay.
Okay. He's on the phone. I'm sorry. We'll get right back to you.
It'd just be another five feet each side. The weather could go five feet there. And that is if the line's in the center.
Actually, it would have to be on this side because this is right away. So it would have to sit 10 foot on this side.
Not to go fit.
But you got right aways and you could access.
That's right. To dig, right.
The other way, the other way, they tell you no.
Yeah.
You're out.
You're out. Yeah.
You did mention, you know, as a proposal to have permanent easement and then could you have it as 10 foot construction easement on the front side?
Would it ever expire? What would define?
Future construction.
So whatever you put in, what, whoever would define construction, if it's maintenance or replacement or?
Yeah, any, any sort of, anything. The only concern, right? The only concern is if we needed to mess with that line.
If you got, if you gotta go back in there, you don't want them to build, I mean, the easement restricts them to build anything to it. And that's, that's.
But most easements I thought were like a, a permanent easement of certain 9 feet and then a construction.
Usually during construction, when you're putting it in, you have that, you'll have temporary construction easement on each side. Dump trucks and equipment's gotta get in to get dirt out, you know, so they go down the side of the ditch. But usually the final ones are permanent. Well, in sewer. Yeah, it's based on the depth and 30 feet's about the minimum on the sewer. Roughly what you're looking at, 30 foot would be the minimum might be. The water line.
We don't know. We're glad you're here, Bobby.
A good catch.
It is.
But do we want to wait for them and, and circle through the last two or three things? Till they come back table this for a second? We can, we can move to old business? Because the, the other one's part of that too.
Yes.
Do we have any old business?
Old business.
Do we have any other business? Training. Well, that's still on there, but we're not.
Well, I left it on there purposely because yes, I want to reach out to M Task in the near future to have someone come down when we may, may only have one item on the agenda, agenda and present some training.
Okay.
Yeah, to include the boards on appeals also.
And peace.
We can come back to some of these too, if we have any board or staff comments and some others come up after they come back and let us know. But does anybody have any other board or staff comments? I had one other citizen to sign up, Linda Clark, because she may have been with Ms. Wilson.
She was.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's all the, all the citizens that signed up. So we'll just wait on the phone call now.
We have created a worksheet for rezon. Where the next time we have a rezon, that would require y'all to go through and write out like your reasons for each, as a board, you know, your yes or no for each of those four factors. We think that would be helpful for this board, but it would be really helpful for the commission. Because then the commission sees exactly what happened here. It's not just New York case.
Yeah.
On the next package that comes out, if we were to have rezoned, that information will be put in the packet for you. More than likely.
Sheet ahead of time, like email or something where we could have a chance to digest it.
That's what I was gonna say. I, I'll go ahead and email that to you. That way each one can look at it, have any comments. But it is a very good piece of information.
I left part of mine, I left part of mine at home.
I brought mine because I don't want to keep up with it for a month. Don't let Chris keep up with it for a month. That mark right there.
There's a small storage fee.
Find that sheet again.
Are the, the size of the plans available? Smaller?
Guess it depends on what we're looking at. This is a good size.
I like it.
We're looking at this.
Well, I mean, if you start dropping down to 18 foot 24, you may lose.
No, this is good.
So scale that. Subdivision regulations, it mentions that only four sets of construction zones are to be submitted. I got, I got more than that. That's what he does say.
Kind of a hangup if you got more than that.
Which, and another topic, I am reviewing three different subdivision regulations right now, trying to piece together. Hopefully in the next couple of months, I'll be able to give you at least one section of the subdivision regulations to look at and pour through. M Task chucked down them, sent me three viable subdivision regulations that he felt were, were good. So it's just a matter of taking pieces of verification out of that, each one, and fitting it to City of Mount Pleasant.
Working on it for way too long and it's overdue. We'll get there.
Absolutely. I feel like that we should be able to do this in the House. Now, of course, with Will, we'll be sending that to Will for him to, to look at, probably before I actually send it to anyone else and of course Cory. So that way they can analyze it and make adjustments, which I'm sure will be needed.
One personal comment, Chris, I'm, I'm glad you're here.
Personal comment.
Well, I greatly appreciate that. I'll get my footing. I'll get my footing. I've had some, uh.
Drinking water from a fire hose.
Well, I'm used to that, but I just feel like that, uh, I need to perfect my process. So I will be working on that. A lot of things coming at me at one time, but that's, that's my custom of that. It's about soaring through them.
You'll be expert in the subdivision regs because you're creating. You'll create the process. That's been a nightmare.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to forget other ordinances in subdivision.
You're in Mount Pleasant now, sir.
Yeah, we drive through the other mess every day.
It's not a BOMA. That's hard. I used to call it city council forever because of being in Columbia forever, so.
Well, it's, uh, 18 years of, of subdivision regulations and actually went to a unified development code later in 2018, but that kind of sticks with you. Gerald, no doubt for me with, uh, with that. Subdivision regulations? How many warrants?
Hello, y'all.
They didn't actually warn us of the subdivision regulations, you said?
They're just, I guess, y'all are, um, they're requesting again, like, I don't know, that it's basically just for these new, the new and old sewer. If you were to approve that, you would make a motion to approve it, but it could be that. The two that ran well, comment that were in the packet and then also, um, condition that the easement be 30 feet, if that's where you're. The next phase of this, you are abandoning the old sewer line and you're accepting, or your, the plat dedicates a new one. Y'all can't accept it. So it dedicates it to the city for public use. Uh, but the city commission would accept it. They'll do that by resolution. Part of accepting a final completed, uh, you know, infrastructure, sewer infrastructure is that we would make sure that it was constructed. We had, as built drawings, which we do have already, and if those have been approved by engineers, which they have been, and then we would also have a sewer purity that said that they would warranty what they built for two years. And so we're in the process of working on that too. So that definitely goes to the city commission. You may see that next time if that's approved. We're also talking about maybe doing a by resolution, but this board is the way we do with, uh, the city commission. So there's, I don't know if that would be helpful or more confusing, but it, it's our paper trail.
I would think without TDEC final approval, we oughtn't to really do anything. Would be my, my personal opinion, but.
That'll be a rubber stamp.
You think it would, probably. But they should have all the paperwork together.
And the rubber stamp.
Yeah, no, you gotta have that.
I can pitch you a little bit. This one is a unique situation because we had a constricted site with active dedicated sewer lines. They expanded, so that caused some reconfiguration of the whole system. This is completely atypical. Um, I think it's a great concern to have an adequate easement for maintenance and repairs. That might be a condition that you could just have tagged on to say that the city's utility consultants review the depth and adequacy of that easement. Probably want to make that easement consistent if you're going to extend it across the property because probably only going to get slightly higher as you go through.
Sorry about that.
The person who's got the final authority is in Italy and so he's not available right now. We would prefer at this point to proceed with the 20 foot easement because that's what we had agreed upon with the city. And we would prefer not to defer it, as we know y'all would prefer not to defer it. If that is just a deal breaker for you, then we would request to defer it so that we can speak with the person who can give us the full authority, um, for that. So that's ultimately a decision for the commission to make. If you're agreeable to the 20 foot easement that was previously agreed on, or if you want us to defer it to get the, the approval from the, um, owner who's not available tonight.
I prefer that we defer it.
I, I would prefer we defer it until we get more information. It's like we get the cart before the horse head.
City staff just has to sign off on all those three things before it comes back state approval, review of the easement.
And there has been death changes and that's.
And then bring it back presented that time would be my opinion. Agreed.
Bring it back. Are you saying it would have to be, all those conditions would need to be met before presented to you?
It'd be really nice.
I would think so. I mean, they're, they're the one, the city's one's got to make that decision. It's mine. That was just mine. That's just what I do for a living. So I see it, but.
I understand that. Um, I think what she was requesting is that if, if you were not agreeable to the 20 foot easement, that it be deferred. Until they can get approval, that condition will be acceptable to their board. But I think what you're saying is something different, that you want all three conditions to be met before a new plat is presented.
Why not present a, a correct plat when we do it? I mean, truthfully.
And so I'm just hearing about Bobby's request, uh, concerns tonight, and we'd like our engineers to kind of weigh in on that too.
And I think the easement one in front of the, from the whole property, that's a, in my opinion, that's a city decision, right?
Correct. Subdivision regulations mentioned.
But if there was a prior agreement that was reached, was there a prior agreement between?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
The prior agreement was for the extension of the sewer line. It was originally paid for by the city. So the agreement was for the, the new sewer line that was built and paid for by UST would be the same distance that.
Yeah, that's really it.
Yeah, so nothing really about.
The, the requirement that the easement go all the way across the property comes from your subdivision regulation.
We don't have an issue with that, that condition. The only issue that we're concerned with is the 30 foot instead of 20 foot. So we're happy to come back next month and, you know, get those conditions agreed upon and approved by this board commission and then.
Say, well, just try to do it next month. I'll entertain a motion on the number eight final plat review.
Make a motion to defer it next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number nine, I guess we, we need to defer that too, because that's part of number eight, resolution to accept ownership and maintenance of sewer improvements. Take a motion on number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's the second Tuesday, second Tuesday.
Thank you.
I think we've already gone through the whole business. If there's any, no other comments, I'll take a motion for adjournments.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.